All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Work Session, Wednesday, October 16th, 2024. It's 9:03 a.m. My name is Ty Mencer, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Caroline Mahia, Commissioner Gary Edwards, and Commissioner Emily Claus. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, Rob Gelder, Sheriff's with us, HR team, Budget team. We've got a full house here this morning. Let's see. Announcements before we start. Written public comment regarding action items on the agenda may be submitted to the Clerk of the Board at amy.davis@co.thurston.wa.us up to two hours before start of meeting time. We have a big closed session to start the agenda, which will not be livestreamed. That is approximately 60 minutes.
Yeah, there's going to be two components. The sheriff wanted to provide some update, and so we estimate 20, 30 minutes for that. And then we wanted to talk with you about some of the financial components and do that in confidence.
Okay, so I'll go through the subsection there, but just to preview the meeting. We'll be back. So 60 minutes, around 10:05 we'll come back to livestream to address midterm change requests for our midterm budget and then any commissioner items. We're here till noon. And so with that, I will read the closed session, RCW 423144A. Collective bargaining sessions with employee organizations, including contract negotiations, grievance proceedings, and discussions relating to the interpretation or application of a labor agreement, or that portion of a meeting during which the governing body is planning or adopting strategy or position to be taken by the governing body during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiation, or grievance, or mediation proceedings, or reviewing proposals made in the negotiations or proceedings while in progress. Deputy Sheriff's contracts is our specific topic area. And again, board action may follow, but we'll be in executive for closed session for 60 minutes. It's 9:05, so we'll be until 10:05.
Okay, it's 10:38, we are back. We finished a closed session and a short break. Livestream should be up and we're proceeding to item two on the morning's agenda, which is midterm change requests, recommendation, and proposed action. And, County Manager.
Thank you so much, Chair and Commissioners. Go ahead and bring up the presentation. This morning, we are revisiting the midterm budget recommendations and are in that recommendation, looking for the board to make a decision. And from there, the budget team continues to move forward with preparing the information for the budget book and the posting. Before we get into the presentation, there are a couple of items that I wanted to respond to Commissioners as a follow-up. The first one is, we had a, part of our recommendation is to remove Amendment One road fund shift that was made and to send that back. The question was asked, what's the impact for Public Works? And so, we're working with Public Works to accommodate that recent general fund balance change. Public Works staff is spending time to right-size their program to adjust revenues and the future fund balance projections. The road fund is in a similar revenue and expenditure situation. The general fund and staff recognize that revenues are declining as well. So, they're looking at the deferring maintenance and will potentially cost more in the future. And in the next little while, we should be able to get some detailed information from Jennifer and the team as to what the potential impacts of projects will be. We just don't have that at this time.
County Manager, I think that part of the road fund is in a similar position to the general fund. That's a really important piece to make sure they highlight.
Yeah, and that they have seen their, and you all know this, that road fund take different hits and so, we'll be working with Jennifer to identify impacts of projects.
Can we share where's?
I guess, as we move forward on that, how does that fit with the shift process that we've had in place? Or are we going to use that to make any adjustments? I mean, that's my concern.
Yeah, we're specifically talking about Amendment One, what was the amount?
Two million.
Two million. Based on the outlook that we thought we had, additional resources was moved back to the road fund.
Yes.
And so, we're suggesting to take that back, outbalance.
Is that shift money, though? Was that shift money?
Yes.
Okay, so are we going to have to even do more than that? That's what I'm wondering.
Not at this time.
Okay, so we're, that's not even on the table?
Not for '24, '25, no. That's not something that we're.
Not so much '24, as much as '25, yeah, okay.
And then, the next item as a bit of follow-up. Ours team has been working with our coroner and we appreciate some things he's brought forward as potential opportunities. And that is, in looking at the autopsy work that's done, we are continuing to look at the potential savings by utilizing an employment contract rather than a contract for services that they use. If we were to enter into an employment contract with someone dedicated for that, it could have a savings of a hundred-plus thousand, maybe even 200,000 a year. So, we'll be looking to bring that forward once that employment contract is dialed in with our legal team, HR team, Gary's team, and then we have some things to anticipate bringing an AIS in the next several board meetings to discuss that and to discuss the potential savings.
I do want to comment on that.
Go ahead, sir.
And I'm just going to use an example. I don't know how many of you followed this, but Seattle PD just recently quit responding to false alarms. And that was a big money saver and a big liability saver for them. We in Thurston County quit responding to false alarms back in about, I'm going to say the mid-'90s. All about inability to do the job. So, we had to make decisions. Which ones did we quit doing? Caused a lot of heat, same kind of heat Seattle is now getting. But where I'm going with this is, on autopsies, the autopsy and death rate difference over the same inflationary period that we're faced with has went from, I don't know, 20 to 150 or something like that. And that's just on the opioid side of things, or the overdose side, let alone the increase due to population. So, I think at some point, we're going to have to make a decision that some of these things that are good to do, even responsible to do, and possibly required to do, we're just going to have to make a decision that we can't afford to do it. And so, I think we actually need to look at what of that impact could be, we're not going to be able to do it. Now, I know we get reimbursement sometimes, and that is an offset. So, we have to balance that all out. But at some point, I think we just have to decide, well, we can't do everything we used to do. So, and I just equate the responding to alarms because my biggest fear as the sheriff was that some kid was going to get hit on a bicycle or chasing a ball, and we're driving to a false alarm through a neighborhood and we're going too fast. You know, so that's what drove me to make that policy change. And I think we, sometimes we just have to make policy changes. I'm just going to.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. And Chair, just one last item regarding the coroner. As we look at the potential savings that we're going to have, and we'll bring all this back on the employment contract, but we would also look to recommend potential reclassification from one of his positions to a chief deputy position. That will afford him the ability to continue the reimbursement rate. It's a conversation we've had with the coroner, and so, again, we'll be working on that with HR. These aren't decisions that are in today's presentation, but we just wanted you to know that as a follow-up to some of the conversations that have been had, we'll be bringing some of these things back for future consideration. So, if we go ahead and go to the first slide. This was the budget outlook after Amendment One. Again, we see in doubt years, our fund balance dropping below and they're becoming a problem for us, having available cash to pay the coming's bills. And then, we also see our expenses that, once they're set with inflationary, they keep going up even if we don't add any additional positions or any other operational components to those expenses. And then, we see our revenues just not keeping track with the expenses.
So, real quick, I mean, we, that's not how it looked when we approved Amendment One, and then there was a revision. And then, I understood with the auditor, working with the auditor, that there's been a revision of the '20, '25 fund balance.
Yeah.
That you showed us a couple of days ago.
Yeah, we'll get to that slide. So, that's a great point you're making, Chair, that this was not what was presented at the time of Amendment One. At the time of Amendment One, it showed that there would be enough reserves to maintain our minimum cash balance needs, and that's why we made a lot of the decisions that were made. What we since come to terms with is that revenues are much flatter than anticipated and that, you know, expenses continue to rise. And the impacts on some of those, as a team stepped in, got the information from our budget system, TC Connect, and then really worked diligently to scrub the numbers to make sure that this is what it was. I think they looked at the model multiple times, rebuilt the model from the ground up to make sure that they weren't missing anything. And then, of course, our interactions and helpful conversations and partnership with our auditor team to help bring closer alignment our outgoing fund balance. And we'll share that in a couple of slides. So, thank you for highlighting that. All right, next slide. And this is a high-level overview of budget recommendations as it refers to the general fund. We have here the maintenance requests, the policy requests, and I think there was a question asked last time about, you know, what are the items that are going to have a non-revenue support to them? And so, I don't know if anyone from the budget team wants to field that question somewhere.
Non-revenue support, you mean like outside revenue covering those expenses?
Right, outside revenue coming and covering it.
Yes, so those were the one-time expenses. In '24, it is the repayment for the housing grant that was given out. There's the ongoing expenses that currently in '24 are the 225,000 for the coroner's office to get his fund balance correct at the end of the year. I'm sorry, it's on the next page.
Oh, I'm like, where's that at?
I'm kind of bouncing around. And then, there is the COLAs. So, either the COLAs for, that are already committed through the contracts, the COLAs that are placeholders for contracts in process.
To send that back, the question was asked, what's the impact of Public Works? And so we're working with Public Works to accommodate that recent general fund balance change. Public Works staff is spending time to right-size their program to adjust revenues and the future fund balance projections. The road fund is in a similar revenue and expenditure situation as a general fund and staff recognize revenues are declining as well. So they're looking at the deferring maintenance and will potentially cost more in the future. And in the next little while, we should be able to get some detailed information from Jennifer and the team as to what potential impacts projects will be. Just don't have that at this time.
Okay, Andrew. I think that part of the road fund is in a similar position to the general fund. That's a really important piece to make sure they highlight.
Yeah, and that they have seen their, and you all know this, that road fund take different hits and so we'll be working with Jennifer to identify impacts to projects.
Commissioner Edwards?
I guess as we move forward on that, how does that fit with the shift process that we've had in place? Or are we going to use that to make any adjustments? I mean, that's my concern.
Yeah, we're specifically talking about Amendment One, what was the amount?
Two million.
Two million. Based on the outlook that we thought we had, additional resources was moved back to the road fund.
Yes.
And so we're suggesting to take that back, outbalance.
Is that shift money, though? Was that shift money?
Yes.
Okay, so are we gonna have to even do more than that? That's what I'm wondering.
Not at this time.
Okay, so that's not even on the table?
Not for 24, 25, no. That's not something that we're.
Not so much 24, much as 25, yeah, okay.
And then the next item, as a bit of follow-up, ours team has been working with our coroner, and we appreciate some things he's brought forward as potential opportunities. And that is, in looking at the autopsy work that's done, we are continuing to look at the potential savings by utilizing an employment contract rather than a contract for services that they use. If we were to enter into an employment contract with someone dedicated for that, it could have a savings of a hundred-plus thousand, maybe even 200,000 a year. So we'll be looking to bring that forward once that employment contract is dialed in with our legal team, HR team, Gary's team, and then we have some things to anticipate bringing an AIS in the next several board meetings to discuss that and to discuss the potential savings.
I do want to comment on that.
Go ahead, sir.
And I'm just gonna use an example, I don't know how many of you followed this, but Seattle PD just recently quit responding to false alarms. And that was a big money saver and a big liability saver for them. We in Thurston County quit responding to false alarms back in about, I'm gonna say the mid-'90s. All about inability to do the job. So we had to make decisions. Which ones did we quit doing? Caused a lot of heat, same kind of heat Seattle is now getting. But where I'm going with this is, on autopsies, the autopsy and death rate difference over the same inflationary period that we're faced with has went from, I don't know, 20 to 150 or something like that. And that's just on the opioid side of things, or the overdose side, let alone the increase due to population. So I think at some point, we're gonna have to make a decision that some of these things that are good to do, even responsible to do, and possibly required to do, we're just gonna have to make a decision that we can't afford to do it. And so I think we actually need to look at what of that impact could be, we're not gonna be able to do it. Now, I know we get reimbursement sometimes, and that is an offset. So we have to balance that all out. But at some point, I think we just have to decide, well, we can't do everything we used to do. So, and I just equate responding to alarms, because my biggest fear as the sheriff was that some kid was gonna get hit on a bicycle or chasing a ball, and we're driving to a false alarm through a neighborhood, we're going too fast. You know, so that's what drove me to make that policy change. And I think we, sometimes we just have to make policy changes. I'm just gonna.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. And Chair, just one last item regarding the coroner. As we look at the potential savings that we're gonna have, and we'll bring all this back on the employment contract, but we would also look to recommend potential reclassification from one of his positions to a chief deputy position. That will afford him the ability to continue the reimbursement rate. It's a conversation we've had with the coroner, and so again, we'll be working on that with HR. These aren't decisions that are in today's presentation, but we just wanted you to know that as a follow-up to some of the conversations that have been had, we'll be bringing some of these things back for future consideration. So if we go ahead and go to the first slide. This was the budget outlook after Amendment One. Again, we see in the out years, our fund balance dropping below, and they're becoming a problem for us, having available cash to pay the county's bills. And then we also see our expenses, that once they're set with inflationary, they keep going up even if we don't add any additional positions or any other operational components to those expenses. And then we see our revenues just not keeping track with the expenses.
So real quick, I mean, we, that's not how it looked when we approved Amendment One, and then there was a revision, and then I understood with the auditor, working with the auditor, that there's been a revision of the 2025 fund balance.
Yeah.
That you showed us a couple days ago.
Yeah, we'll get to that slide. So that's a great point you're making, Chair, that this was not what was presented at the time of Amendment One. At the time of Amendment One, it showed that there would be enough reserves to maintain our minimum cash balance needs, and that's why we made a lot of the decisions that were made. What we since come to terms with is that revenues are much flatter than anticipated, and that, you know, expenses continue to rise. And the impacts on some of those, as a team stepped in, got the information from our budget system, TC Connect, and then really worked diligently to scrub the numbers to make sure that this is what it was. I think they looked at the model multiple times, rebuilt the model from the ground up to make sure that they weren't missing anything. And then, of course, our interactions and helpful conversations and partnership with our auditor team to help bring closer alignment our outgoing fund balance, and we'll share that in a couple slides. So thank you for highlighting that. All right, next slide. And this is a high-level overview of budget recommendations as it refers to the general We have here the maintenance requests, the policy requests, and I think there was a question asked last time about, you know, what are the items that are going to have a non-revenue support to them? And so I don't know if anyone from the budget team wants to field that question somewhere.
Non-revenue support, you mean like outside revenue covering those expenses?
Right, outside revenue coming and covering it.
Yes, so those were the one-time expenses. In '24, it is the repayment for the housing grant that was given out. There's the ongoing expenses that currently in '24 are the $225,000 for the coroner's office to get his fund balance correct at the end of the year. I'm sorry, it's on the next page.
Oh, I'm like, where's that at?
I'm bouncing around. And then there is the COLAs. So either the COLAs for, that are already committed through the contracts, the COLAs that are placeholders for contracts in process, and then the COLAs that the board can choose to apply to those that are not unionized.
If we go back to the previous slide, we have at the top, the actions we're requesting, these actions were part of Amendment One decisions. So one that we started off talking about, the road fund, general fund transfer back of 2 million, and the fund that FJC from bond proceeds rather than the general fund. And that's part of the recommendation that's before you today.
Just to be very clear, the budget team is not recommending that you undo any of the other decisions that were made in the amendment.
Just those two?
Just those two. So offices and departments other than Public Works are not impacted by these two decisions.
All right, if we go to the next slide, thank you so much. And then we have at the bottom, total impact of the general fund in '24 and '25. We have the team put together, and I appreciate the offset by revenue and one-time expenses, and then what's the ongoing impact. You have the next slide, please. Chair, this is, I think, what you were referring to, after discussions with the auditor's team and working through the numbers, this has the adjusted fund balance numbers, and somewhere just, you went out a few bubbles and talked us through it a little bit.
Sure, so with the adjustments made, considering the recommendations for the board to approve, the 2024 fund balance is reflecting currently just over 30 million, and '25, just over 18 million, and in '26, just over 8 million. If you look ahead, you can see that the anticipated fund balance in years after 2026 continued to decline. And there is also a bubble in the bottom that shows that our two-month target fund balance in '24 and '25 are lower than we would like to see them to continue with operations. Our target fund balance right now is sitting at about 23 million, and the minimum fund balance monthly would be 12 million.
So part of the strategy, Commissioners, is for us to finish the '24, '25 budget cycle, it's a two-year cycle, and being the midterm, we're entering into the second year of that cycle, knowing that we have the cash on hand to finish that out would then allow us to pivot quickly to discuss '26, '27, and beyond. And that's where we would look to, even starting this afternoon, start the conversations about what are ways in which we can address the shortfall. And it's really two components, very simple. How do you reduce expenses, and how do you try, are there opportunities to increase revenue? Simple from a standpoint of those two concepts, but the outworking of those operationally, and then how do you work through the conversations about revenue? That's where the complexity lies in those discussions and working it out.
There's no change between this one and two days ago, that we got that same graph, right?
Right.
Same, okay. So one thing that I'm noticing just is like, even like going back to when we were Amendment One, it was below our target line, but like, at the out years of the model, we were seeing a trend back up, and I'm not seeing, I mean, everything's reduced, everything's reduced here, but I'm not seeing that trend back up in 2029 or whatever, it's just a straight downward dive. And is that a function of new economic data, or how did we, how did we get to that change of no projected uptick in?
Fund balance?
Fund balance in the out years.
So.
If fund balance diminishes and expenses go up slowly and revenue doesn't climb enough, it just doesn't rebuild it back, is that?
Yeah, that's correct. Because the revenue hasn't dropped, what it takes to continue, what it takes to make up that gap stays pretty high. Without having fund balance, it's not going down, we're just, we're eating into the hole. That's why we call that a structural deficit, because it's not just like a one-time expense and then you can fix it. What we look to is try and address the expenses and conversations about what are opportunities for us to look at revenue options at the same time.
See, the money's different colors.
Is there a monopoly game in and out?
Allow me to elaborate.
But, so it doesn't necessarily have to do with changing or differing economic outlook, it has to do with the fact that when the, when those revenue numbers are flattened like they are, and expenses are continuing to go up, that line continues to chart its way up. That charting its way up is without, after the solid line, it's with no operational increase, it's just the inflationary component of what we anticipate with some assumptions of very baseline COLAs, et cetera. Every year, there's requests. Every year, offices are asking for positions, there's things that they're working on, and so to imagine that that line will just stay flat going forward is almost unrealistic. That's where we have to look at, how do we potentially reduce our expenses, contain some budget, so that the need to fill that gap is less, and therefore you start building some of your fund balance back up. Not to the measure that it was before, because as you stated, Chair, during the pandemic, with the infusion of one-time money, our fund balance went to record high.
We're just trying to get to the blue line. Those were totally artificial.
Yeah, it's one-time.
Fake numbers. But we need to stop the bleeding.
Yes.
Like, we need to figure out whatever discretionary things are that we're doing and reevaluate.
Yeah, and our approach would be that every quarter, we're coming back to the board to identify what we've realized in revenue. I know there's some discrepancies about, well, this is way too of a pessimistic view. It's pessimistic. Well, the pessimism is stemming from the place of, we haven't realized even the conservative numbers that we've put into place. Sales tax is a perfect example, 2% in the assumptions, and we're getting 1.6, 1.7. So when we look at other forecasts that show we're gonna go from 2% to 4% to 5%, that's like best-case scenario, but if we're not realizing that today, we have to be careful because we no longer have that cushion of fund balance to ride that wave down. What we're saying is, after 2025, we go below the place where we're, where we should be to have cash on hand just to do the county business. And then, of course, in out years, it goes even below that. That's what we have to fix. It doesn't have to be something that sets the stage for the rest of the out years, but when we build the 26, 27, we cannot build it with, in an environment where we don't have enough cash to do business, the fund balance drops in for that line. So that does mean we'll have to look at operations, look at what containment strategies we have in the budget, and then we look to start that conversation this afternoon. Because that'll help the budget team give enough runway to have meaningful conversations with the board, and then work those operational dynamics out within the organization, with our operational leaders, our appointed and elected officials. And then also still track what we're realizing in our revenue, and we can build an approach that has a toggle effect, that if revenue comes back stronger, then we don't have to implement as many measures. But if revenue comes back flat or below projections, then we stay the course so that we're not running out of cash in the out years. You have the next slide, please. Here we have a budget recommendations, all other funds, and what we provided to the board, and we appreciate the budget team. They took the list of recommendations, and they did a few things with it. They not only scrubbed the list to make sure all the information was accurate, but they also went through and broke it up into different categories. They added a few columns to show different revenue sources, so that it gives a bigger picture. They added line numbers, so that if there are any questions about specific lines, we could walk that through. And then they added a capital section at the end. Just want to thank the budget team for working on this and being responsive to the Commissioners' request. It did take a bit of effort to do, but I think it's valuable for the conversation.
I'd just point out, echo that thank you, and point out that all five Commissioners had to follow a smaller group meeting between the last presentation and this presentation to talk more specifically about individual items that we had questions about, so.
And not as a quorum, but?
No, in smaller, smaller units.
And we appreciate the Commissioners' time investment.
Any changes between 14, between the 14th and the 16th here?
I do want to point out one change on Slide 6, the J-94, $111,000 in 2025 is actually, should have been struck from this slide because it is on the recommendation to not fund because that particular fund does not have the ability to absorb that cost. It was also a part of a prior year's reduction.
I was supposed to go into detention sales tax, but it's maxed, right?
Yes.
I do have just a quick question on that Commissioner shift of ARPA funding. Are we gonna be able to get shed of, are we gonna be left holding the bag on anything that we didn't spend or anything as this thing moves forward?
On the ARPA money?
Yeah.
The team is monitoring it closely, and our commitment is to bring, if we identify that there's balances, we will, like we have in the past, I think we did it about a month ago, we'll bring those discussions back to make sure that we are allocating the funds, not giving anything back.
There was also discussion, if you'll remember, that the remaining unobligated funds would go to the substance abuse monitoring program. So that's how we have it built in to.
And that's if we get down far enough on those remaining funds.
Well, there was remaining funds that were allocated and programmed. The team identified that if there are any additional, we will come back and revisit that, but we.
We might have more than what they need in that.
Oh, no.
No, they can use it?
Yeah.
For sure, okay.
Yeah, they can use it.
And our thought is there may be a little bit more when everything settles, and so, but we won't just unilaterally make that decision, we'll come back and update the board if there's more, show you that's what our plan is to get you to reaffirm it.
So I would also say at this time, the board has earmarked everything, and we're in the process of doing those final contracts and agreements that must be in place by the end of this year to be able to use all of the money.
And that looks like it's on target.
Yes, we are tracking that.
Great question. All right, so we have the noted change there, which will be as part of the recommendation. All right, we go to the next slide, please. So there we have budget recommendations, all other funds, total policy requests lined out there. And the one item to note is on the IT-FTE incremental sheriff, that's a conversation that you're wanting to have with IT and the sheriff's team to identify, could this potentially be a shift of PSST? We have not had a chance to have that conversation yet, so it's something that we will be having.
And that's the 140?
Yes. Position definitely is needed.
When will you know that? I mean, what's the argument? I'm, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, we just have to sit down with the sheriff's team and go over all the PSST. I think now that we are, the maintenance of effort conversation is moving forward, we have a meeting scheduled to do that, to finish the MOE conversation at the same time, maybe the sheriff's team just to round up safety sales and act expenses. So probably within about two weeks' time of all that dialing in. And a lot of that information's gonna come back to the Commissioners for final presentation and review. Next page, we have the technical corrections list, known as the errata list. Do you want to point out, I don't believe we need to go over in detail, but any changes or things you want to make for the Commissioners?
I think the only item on this list would be the fourth line, and that was the Jazzcom, $139,000. That needs to be added, and I believe that conversation occurred yesterday.
Yeah, so the conversation, I would say, started yesterday about the increased expenses from Jazzcom, out of 138, rounded up to 139,000. We don't want to just move past that and take it for granted. That's something that we were notified in the last several days. I believe on Monday, Jazzcom presented, and I sent that information out. Again, I appreciate Assistant City Manager Lacy and Rick, their team do a great job of communicating. They reached out and just sent us a clip of the Jazzcom meeting for, and I passed it on to all the Commissioners. They were explaining the increase in costs and everything else. I know that there has been a lot of discussion at the board level about that, so I'll just take a pause to see, Chair, if there's any comments or questions.
Yeah, actually, he has got a question.
I, wait.
A little comment. I can see it on her face. And we'll just go down the line.
I, okay, well, I guess I'll start with, the Jazzcom issues have yet to be resolved. The fact that there is a 14% increase is an impact. And then in the future, there's going to be a request for a capital project, and I don't see how we keep a program like this going. And yet, I'm still getting contacted by different animal community groups that are frustrated with the services that they're receiving from Jazzcom. And I cannot, in good conscience, just knowing where our budget is, vote to support a 14% increase.
Please, Travis.
I guess it's, it's not only the 14% increase, it's the total package, which is now over a million dollars. And I, I know in the past, we have discussed the possibility of the sheriff picking up that for a much lesser amount. I don't know how that works as far as, do we need a separate facility to put cats and dogs, or do we have a smaller contract with Jazzcom? So, I mean, I'm, the thing is, the 14% increase now is gonna equate to a lot more of an increase later. So we're gonna continue incrementally being well up over a million dollars every year, and I don't think we can afford that for what we're getting, so.
I just want to point out, on their, on their six-year projection that is in the slide that everybody was, was given, it's, there's a $100,000, $140,000 increase between now and this next year, but it's every year after that as well. So if you look at the, the six-year projection that they put out there, it's another 80,000 in 2026, and then up to 1.36 in 2027. So it, it goes up that same increment just about every year. The, and what they're, the argument that they're making is that, they call it their reserve funds, but it's donations. So donations come into them, you know, they're kind of a nonprofit. They, you know, they showed every year, they get almost 200,000 in donations, and in previous years, they'd been using those donations to supplement their operating funds, and they're making the argument that they, they don't want to, or they're saying they can't do that because they have created policies, budget policies that say they shouldn't do that. But that's their own policies. And so they're wanting to separate the donations from their operation, operational funds, and they're making the argument to the jurisdictions that their true costs are what need to be covered in the assessments. So that, you know, that's, that's kind of a decision that they're making on their own. In 2023, they brought in, they had a massive donation from an estate of $400,000. So just last year, they had 666,000 in donations. They want that separated from their operating costs, and they want to make sure that all the expenses are passed on to the jurisdictions. And for us, that's, that's, that's more than anyone else, because they base the assessment on population. So we pay a tremendous amount of money to their operations, it was, it was around half, but we only have, we have very little say in how they operate. So their, their, their suite of expenses and services aren't at all decided or controlled by us, they're controlled by the Jazzcom board, which we have one, one voice on. So if they want to add additional veterinarians, they want to provide expanded services, we, we have no way to control those costs. And so there's, that 10% could go up if they want to do additional things.
I guess I'd like to hear if there's going to be a proposal from the sheriff to make up, if we decide not to do this. up, if we decide not to do this, how we're going to solve the problem and what he's proposing? Because he's proposed something. Have we heard anything new?
Sheriff has sent me, I think it's a proposal that has probably been sent before. If I understood the email, I looked at it quickly. I would like to meet with the sheriff to understand that. I think the challenge we're having is, you know, we knew potential eight percent increase, but the information that changed as of Friday afternoon is it's not only fourteen percent, but as Commissioner Fornier said, with the sheets that were passed out to the commissioners, it's fourteen percent plus for the next several years as they back out their reserves. And so when it gets up to like one point two, almost one point three million in the years out, that's a significant investment. I don't have, we have not had the time to figure out what are the options. Getting this on Friday, today is Wednesday, we've been focused on getting this budget information to you. However, we programmed this in simply because it's our current situation, and we're being notified by them that it's going up by a hundred and thirty nine thousand this year. So that's why it's on here. It's not to say that we are supportive of this or not supportive of it. I just haven't had time to figure out what, if any, are other viable options that then we can bring back. This would be a separate conversation that I would want to bet with our team, talk to the sheriff about, talk more with Jazzcom. I've recommended, and they've been very open, and I appreciate Sarah and Shannon's leadership to come and talk to individual commissioners, or two at a time, so that we can understand this in more detail. So I think we need to bet this out. We're at a place today where we have to program something for payment in twenty twenty five, and that's why this is here.
What do we have in there before we got the information from Jazzcom? Did we put eight percent in there when we, we just didn't have it in there yet?
You said last year's amount?
We had last year's amount, yeah. Did you have an inflator on it?
No.
No.
Okay.
But I think what, and why I appreciate Shannon spending time to come out and connect, and I appreciate Rick's, the city manager at Lacy also, because this is a change in direction on what we're going to see for the next several years. So it was great to get an overview of what to expect for the next following years, so that as Commissioner Fornier said, not just a decision today, it's where we're going for budget purposes, to get the book ready, to get everything dialed in. That's why the numbers at a placeholder here. The board could always decide to remove it at a later time if there's other options.
Well, I'll be curious, I'll ask you to have an open mind about what you hear. I'd be curious what your perspective is. For me, without speaking to any of the frustrations, I've never heard a viable proposal. I heard from Sheriff Snaza and from Sheriff Sanders, I've never been convinced that it's going to save us any money or increase services. I just don't think it works. Doesn't solve our problem, but it's not, in my opinion, it's not the solution unless something's changed from what I've heard in the past. So it's just, that's why I said yesterday, it's been a circular issue. It's the problem that can't be solved because we can't lift up our own animal service. The community absolutely needs these services. We can't lift up the system on our own. We've built a regional inter-jurisdictional system no one's satisfied with, and if the only option is the sheriff, I'm not there. So where does that leave us? I don't know, but that's the situation, that's the connection.
We were without, like, full services for a while, right? Like, how long were we out with, where we didn't have a full contract, Robin, with Jazzcom?
Three years.
Three years.
Four years.
And just based on that response, it's the reason why I pushed it, and I pushed really hard for it. And I think I was dragging you across that finish line, Commissioner Mensah, and I was like really dragging Commissioner Edwards across that finish line, right? And I was really pushing for it because based on those conversations, like, we were promised a level of service that I have yet still to see. And when I still have community groups still reaching out with the same frustrations that they did when I was trying to push us across the finish line, I mean, I'm in the same spot. Like, nothing has really changed for me. The only thing that changed for the board is that we're not sitting here with dangerous dog designations. We haven't had one in a while that we were having before, and.
And we don't have the sheriff, I mean, yeah.
And so for me, I'm just like, okay, what's the difference then, right? Like, what is the difference? Knowing, like, previously with, when we were at half service and we weren't paying this additional big impacts, and I know commissioners at the time went to that lower service because they were going through same budget shortfalls as well, and.
And we went through that, like, were you here when we were talking to Sarah? It was like we went through that exercise because it was like, if the option is to just go back to the lower level of service, then she was like, whoa, hold on, that was calculated, like, the cost of the services might not, if we recalculated that reduction, it may not yield the same savings as it did before.
But I would like to see those calculations, and yet still, to this day, I have not been presented with those calculations.
So what the, I think what would be easier in this conversation is for us to decide on what, and I, and I, right now, for this conversation, we can bifurcate it. You want to just pay the current level. We don't want to do the fourteen percent increase. We can notify Jazzcom, we're going to pay current level. Please tell us what our service levels will be minus the fourteen percent. Then that allows us to have a more detailed conversation.
Does the ILA allow us to do that?
Well, we did it before, you were paying.
We negotiated a new ILA.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we specifically said Thurston County is only going to pay for this, and it was calculated, and it was formulated. We had a separate ILA, and then we went back, you know, and basically restored and changed the ILA.
And to clarify, Commissioner Meier, I did not quite understand your question. The county had decided, I believe in two thousand eight.
Yeah, it was longer than two thousand four years.
Yeah, to have that reduced payment. It was more than half, but not a lot more. And there was an agreement of specifically what animal services would not provide. And it was about three to four years ago when we went to what we termed full payment. But even after that, we did not receive all of the benefits because of the staffing issues.
They did a calculation based on.
Yeah, we got a rebate.
The calls that we weren't going to pay for, what percentage of calls that is that Jazzcom is receiving, and then they calculated that into how much we would save, and it was like a third off or whatever.
Yeah.
Sarah's basically saying, if you guys are going back there, then we have to redo that calculation, and our call, you know, suite has, profile has changed, and so it may not be a third.
It would be more now since they've worked with TCOM to increase the number of calls that they're receiving.
Maybe, but.
Because there was that disconnect where the sheriff was still getting a tremendous amount of animal service calls, then they went back to TCOM to make sure that those would be routed correctly, and she's been open about that, that it is, in their, you know, in their comments, they've said that their calls have increased since doing that.
So maybe we get the, maybe we get the third benefit. So maybe it's not one point one million, it's eight hundred thousand. And then our citizens don't get, you know, certain types of services.
There's kind of a structural, like, issue in, like, the way we, like, listening, you know, like, you know, I said, hey, you know, this is a big increase for us, you know, this is a lot of money for us, and it's going to be a hard conversation. And some of the retorts back were, well, it's not very much for us because of the allocation differences. So the other cities, they're like, well, that's only, it's only a ten.
Budget does for them.
Yeah, it's budget does for us, but it's not for us. And so there's a group of people that are making decisions on our financial future, and we're, I feel, we're disproportionately affected, and we have no way to really weigh in on the services they provide, because they could be like, well, we're going to, we're going to provide grooming services to every animal in the county, you know, like, I'm exaggerating, but they could make these decisions outside of our board, and then those costs are just, they just passed on to us disproportionately, and we don't have a way.
That's just the structure of the ILA when it was negotiated.
Sure, it is what it is. I'm just, there's, I think there's a hitch there that can cause problems, issues.
A few recommendations. You can always change direction later. We don't have time to negotiate an ILA before the budget.
No, I say put it in there for now.
Okay. And then I, we can.
Without the fourteen percent.
No, we have to.
That's not what he's saying.
We have to do the fourteen percent because that's the ILA. With the direction, to me as county manager, to work, to come up with some options, explore the proposal that I just got an email yesterday from the sheriff. Where I came from, we operated animal control services department and shelter. They're inherently very expensive, and so we just have to take a look at that, and we just need time to do that. My other comment is that as the board members sit on the Jazzcom board, and Shannon helped educate me that there's joint animal services and there's the joint animal services commission or committee.
Committee.
But as a commissioner sits on there, they need to be listening to anything that's going to increase costs of service through those lenses. And as Thurston County's representative should be voting no on anything that's going to increase the costs and services to the jurisdictions, which we, because of our unincorporated population, as you mentioned, Commissioner Fornier, we pay the majority of those costs. Because that is, I believe, representative of the concern that we have in this fiscal constraint. So my recommendation is that we move forward with that number. We will circle and have this conversation in detail, and then come back in several weeks to follow up, and the board can always make decisions to renegotiate an ILA, to explore other opportunities. But I just don't have the information at hand to understand this.
This is like setting something for public hearing, right? We're proving something to go into the book and go to the public.
Yeah.
It can be tweaked.
It can be tweaked, yes.
But according to the ILA, can it be tweaked midstream?
I don't know exactly what we'd have to do to.
Yeah, well, you know, we, this takes effect in twenty twenty five, so we have, it's late October. We have an opportunity to sit and come back to the board and get a direction on what you want to do with the increasing costs. Now that we know that the cost is going to increase for the next several years, that's the direction that Jazzcom is headed, that changes the dynamic of this being a one-time eight percent increase that we thought. And I asked the question, well, can you explain those costs?
Commissioner Claus.
Thank you. I just want to, like, remind the board through this conversation that, as, I mean, we do have a voice on Jazzcom by sending a representative. And at the time that the reserve fund policies were created, it was twenty twenty, and we did have a representative, and that was Commissioner Mensah. And not to put you on the spot, but like, everyone agreed to this policy. And as members change, like, the vision will change, but that's why we have policies in writing. And so, like, the increase in cost to stop offsetting the operational budget so much by the reserve fund was something that's known, and it's been documented. And so if, over the years, that communication hasn't come back to the board, as a reminder from our policy, from our representative, hey, by the way, we should be anticipating this because there's a policy, then I think, like, then I'm struggling to understand the role of our, or like, the value of our role on these external committees. Because, like, I found this out at, through Jazzcom, but I had never known about it, and I've spent the last year trying to get up to speed on all this history, and no one pointed this out to me. So it just feels like there's some sort of, like, lapse in the continuity of communication around this stuff that I think we need to make sure, like, we're explaining when we have these kinds of conversations, because I know it gets really challenging whenever we talk about Jazzcom. But like, we make comments that I think get us off of the goal of, like, trying to improve our inter-jurisdictional relationships, which, like, that should be part of the conversation too. And it goes both ways. I'm not saying we need to, you know, do a bunch of stuff to improve that and not expect something back, but like, I just think that's important to keep in mind.
Commissioner Fornier, I just wanted to kind of, we started out the year, this keeps rolling through my head, is we started out the year with a discussion about concerns for services that we were receiving, and there was a couple of big discussions about some dissatisfaction and some, you know, not really being happy with the services we received. And, you know, well, I hear you saying there was a policy that was made in twenty twenty. Things changed, relationships changed, the environment changes, but we started out this year, this is just my experience, you gave your experience, we started out this year talking about not necessarily being satisfied with the service, and we're ending the year being told that those services aren't going to change. We're not, we're still not going to talk about large animal livestock issues that are, you know, unrecognized, but we're ending the year being told you're going to get fourteen percent increases in costs with no discussion about service changes. So that's going to cause friction.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but, I mean, it's hard because, like, I do have responses, but I want to try to not keep us on, like, that path when we're trying to talk about the budget, but.
I guess just to follow up on that, that the information has or hasn't got back, as far as I know, it has got back. When I served a term on the Jazzcom board, the big topic that I kept bringing back to the board was that be prepared for this tremendous capital outlay of a new facility. That was the big thing during my time there, which was an unrealistic expectation that the county, if they continued to proportionately, which I feel is disproportionately, provide capital to Jazzcom, I didn't see any way we were going to afford that and how that was going to come about. And I believe the board was notified of that. So we've still got that pending, let alone this unsatisfactory situation that we're dealing with. So I'm real interested in hearing a proposal, and so far, it's only been from the sheriff, I guess, about how this can work. And if we have to, according to the ILA, tell them, okay, well, we're going to go with this, I'd say we, you know, we don't put the fourteen percent in there, or whatever the amount is, and just say, figure out what you're going to have to cut a little bit, but we don't have the resources to do that, to make sure that we set the tone correctly. Because if we knuckle under, then what's to say we don't just continue to knuckle under? At some point, we reach a threshold that we know we can't afford it. I know darn well we can't afford a new building or the portion thereof that's going to be assigned to us. So I don't know the answer, but the information has been in front of this board, you know, so whether it was Ty's deal, or my deal, or whoever was there, whether it got absorbed or not, to what extent, that's another issue.
Yeah. And to your point, Commissioner Edwards, the building is still on the horizon, and our portion of shares, I don't know, it's quite fifty percent, but it's somewhere around there.
Forty something.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a lot.
So that's, that's a something.
Yeah, well, I don't know, because I was on the board before you.
Yeah.
When I was on, and when they were talking about a building, and there was never a suggestion when I was there that we were going to just write a check for a new building. I mean, there was recognition that nobody could afford it, and the question was always, how are we going to do it? You know, like, capital campaign, I mean, you know, get, it was always like, go to legis, I mean, whatever, like, nobody was saying, like, oh, Thurston County is going to be on the hook for forty-four percent of a new building. Like, that was not, that was recognized to be unrealistic.
But each time the septic system plugged up, it's all my idea.
Well, you got to keep, yeah, you do have to keep patching up the building that you have if you're not going to invest in a new one, and that's not cheap either, as we're learning.
Thank you, commissioners. If we go to the next slide, so our, oops, here we go. What we're recommending today is to approve the preliminary two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five midterm budget without fourteen thousand extra help.
Without what? Oh, Paul, did you get it on court yet?
Yeah, without the one item.
So just to clarify, that the motion would approve the budget as received from the auditor with these specific changes and the errata list.
Thank you.
Is there a motion of that? So. Second. Motion in second to approve the budget as presented by the auditor with the items that have been presented in our spreadsheet and the errata list.
Correct.
Any discussion on the. Any discussion on the motion?
It's pits. I'll just leave it at that.
It's a, it's just the beginning of the work.
Of the pits.
No other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To conclude, just thank you to the budget team.
Tip, we have a new...
Yes.
Did I get that right, tip? Brand new, like, second day or something on the job.
It is second day.
So, welcome. Thank you for helping us. And we've got a potluck coming up later on.
We do?
I don't know what your specialty is. I don't want to call people out.
But it better be good.
It's your time to shine. No pressure, tip.
Extra items is the last piece. Anything in the address, 1130. I know we've got different things going on in conflict, at least I do, this afternoon. The board is meeting at 2:00 again, okay. Elections going on. I've got my SEPTI meeting at 1:00 overlapping, but I'll just cut out of that. But this board will be back at 2:00 for a new session. So we're adjourned.